Call to order, Christine Vitale, I'm the chair. Joined tonight by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, interim superintendent, Dr. Steve Tracy, welcome. Welcome back, I should say. Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxa Cannelli, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. I ask you all, please rise for the pledge. And Dr. Tracy, will you lead us in the pledge? On behalf of the board, Dr. Tracy, I want to welcome you back. We did welcome you at our June meeting, but now that you're formally here, I want to say thank you for just getting right to work. And it seems that one of the first orders of business for you, once again, is addressing the racial balance plan of the district. So I appreciate the work that you've done. The meeting of this, of the board tonight is for the board to receive the presentation on the amendment to the plan. Just for the public's little recap, the board was asked by the State Board of Education for an update to our current racial imbalance plan. We went up in November. At that point, we were asked to submit a timeline. We were asked to come back again in May, at the May meeting. We were asked to present another timeline, actually more of a definitive plan, an amendment to our current plan with hard, fast dates on when we thought we would see some movement. Originally, the date for that submission of that plan was August 4th. The State Board has graciously extended an extension to us to September 8th. So I thought it was important that we meet tonight to provide staff's initial thoughts on the plan and to get some feedback from the board and from the public. To members of the public, I do apologize that this was a special meeting that was sort of put there in the middle of July. But as I said, the timing just kind of worked out that way from when the plan is due back to the state. Right now, the plan will hopefully be voted at our August 30th meeting. This presentation will be posted on the website along with the draft of the plan. And with that, Dr. Tracy, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Let me start by thanking Dr. Parrish, Dr. Zavajansik, and Ms. Marti for helping me with this over the last few weeks. We were kind of on a short timeline, and they were instrumental in pulling this together. And I also want to acknowledge the work that my predecessor, Mr. Cummings, did on bringing us as far as we've come. We're not asking for any votes tonight, simply a presentation and some initial clarifying discussion. But with that, I'm going to move over to where the clicker is, and we'll walk you through what we're asking you to consider. I have to keep my finger on this little button the whole time. Okay. Okay, so why are we doing this? Three purposes, really. One, to sustain, enhance, and enhance quality education for all the students in Fairfield. Second, we need to recognize the growing diversity in our community and assure that every child has an equal opportunity to learn and succeed. And third, we need to bring our schools into compliance with Connecticut's racial balance law. So that's what this plan attempts to do. There are five pieces to it. The first part, recognizing that there'll be a lot of community interest in what is on the table here. We're going to plan a series of presentations that we will do jointly with members of the board on the plan and all of its aspects. This will take place at various locations, in person and also virtual. We want to give as many citizens as we can the opportunity to hear about this, to comment, to ask questions. So that's part number one. Part two, we know that we need to heighten our expertise, both on the part of this board, our district and school leaders, our faculty, on the whole issue of equity and equal opportunity. And we'll be planning this fall and then delivering in the winter and spring a series of equity workshops for all of us so that we can all be up to speed, understanding the important concepts and terms as we work our way through this important work. Third part has to do with making sure that we have a climate in every one of our schools that provides for every child a safe and loving and learning atmosphere. By the 1st of February, this plan says that the district will review current steps in the eight areas that you see listed here that are designed to do exactly that, that regardless of where a child may be coming from or their race or heritage, that they will have access to effective instruction. They'll be in a setting that feels comfortable and positive for them. And to the extent that that review turns up shortcomings or needs for improvement, that will be, that will be part of the response. The district improvement plan that this board approved just recently actually already anticipates some work in this area, calling upon students to acknowledge and value diversity, to understand and appreciate other cultures, and to engage in a culturally responsive curriculum, and for the district to close opportunity gaps, to reduce barriers at the secondary level to the most rigorous courses, and to promote greater diversity in our hiring efforts. So you've already, you're already on record taking some steps in the direction of these ideas. Number four, the issue of elementary school attendance districts. For one thing, there is a lot of variation in the extent to which your buildings are at capacity across the 11 elementary schools. Five of them, in fact, are below 75% capacity, but another five are above 85%. And there's a chart in the appendix that you may have noticed that shows that the enrollment that we expect to see this fall is more than 1,000 youngsters below the number of seats that you have. So there's a certain amount of excess space, and it is not distributed equally across the district. Some schools are relatively full, other schools not. So this is an issue, in my opinion, that the district is going to have to face up to over the next few years, regardless and aside from the racial balance issues. How do we make the most efficient use of our facilities? How do we distribute the population of youngsters in a responsible way? So redistricting is on the table. In addition to that, our schools have grown increasingly diverse over the last 12 years. The percentage of students of color in our elementary schools has risen significantly from just about 17%, 17 and a half percent, I think is the number, to over 25% in just 12 years. So that's a community reality. Because our school assignments reflect community housing patterns, the distribution of students of color has not been uniform amongst our elementary schools. And so you know that, for example, at McKinley School, which has been the center of attention for the racial balance conversation, the percentage of youngsters of color has risen from about 44% to about 55% over that same 12-year period. Those of us who have been following this know that Connecticut's racial balance law, which was adopted initially back in 1969, requires that no school differ by more than 25% from the district-wide average with respect to the percentage of youngsters of color enrolled. In the law, if you're above 15%, you're declared to be impending imbalanced. And if you get above 25%, you are outright imbalanced. The chart on the right shows the situation with respect to the McKinley School compared to the district-wide average. And the line, the horizontal line, is that 25% imbalanced line. And you can see from this that for 11 out of the last 12 years, McKinley has been over the line, and in fact, has been over the 25% limit for the last nine consecutive years. That's why we're talking about this. As the chairwoman mentioned earlier, the State Board of Education has set a September 8th deadline for us to propose an amendment to the racial balance plan that will bring the district into compliance. So that's what we're setting out to do and why we're presenting this information tonight. As the Board of Ed redraws its K-5 attendance lines in response to the enrollment and capacity issues that I mentioned earlier, it makes sense to draw those lines in a way that brings you into compliance with the law. Redistricting is not a popular topic. It's not something you want to do every two or three years. And so now is the time to address all of the issues, in my opinion, related to attendance lines. I've suggested in the plan that I presented to you that the goal ought to be to reduce that percentage, the difference between McKinley's minority population and the districts, to reduce it to a number below 15%. That brings you out of the realm of imbalance and out of the realm of impending balance. One would not be surprised if housing trends continue to see that percentage creep back up again. But you certainly don't want to be at 24.8%. And two years after you go through all this, you're right back in the same problem. So I've suggested that the goal here is a plan that reduces the difference between McKinley School and the rest of the district to less than 15%. The timeline for this work, I'm suggesting, is as follows. That by May of '23, that the superintendent present a redistricting plan to a committee of the board. That might be a special committee that's appointed specifically for this purpose or one of your existing standing committees. So May of '23. In June of '23, I'm suggesting that that committee recommend a plan to the Board of Education, and that the board adopt a plan in October of '23 for implementation in August of '24. That's when the new arrangement would take effect. The final piece of the plan is consideration of an intra-district magnet school program in order to offer enhanced opportunities for youngsters and to encourage families to think about having their children attend school beyond their immediate neighborhood. And the two possibilities that we think are worthy of discussion are the International Baccalaureate Program and/or a dual-language magnet program. In my opinion, it's not likely that these programs will contribute substantially to reducing the racial imbalance numbers. It may contribute a little bit, but I wouldn't hang my hat on this as a solution. But I do think it offers an opportunity for us to create new programs, to make them attractive to families, to get families to think about having their children attend a school that they would not otherwise attend in their neighborhood. Participation would be voluntary. This is a planning process. The board may end up deciding not to do this. The staff may decide that it's not worthy or affordable. So there's a lot of ifs in this one. But we would have a two-year planning process, followed by, in May of '24, if the board decides to go forward, a description of program options that would go out to families. And we would ask by December that they come back and signal that they wish to enroll. If we meet minimum enrollment numbers, you need at least a certain number of kids to make this economically feasible, then a program could begin in the fall of 2025. Thanks for listening. There's an awful lot there. And the rest of the evening is open for discussion. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me here in case you have questions that we can, that we can answer for you.
Thank you for the presentation. Sorry for that little sidebar with Mr. Asa. I'll take it to the board for any questions or discussions. Mrs. Gerber.
Hi, yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. I guess I have a lot of questions, but obviously it's no secret that the topic of redistricting is certainly one that's going to engender a tremendous amount of distress and questions. So just here on page four of the plan that you provide at our desks today, it says the superintendent will present district-wide redistricting plans. So are those plans going to come from staff? Are they going to come from outside, from SLAM, from? I just, I guess my question is because there have been different redistricting. Well, the last redistricting was just the middle school redistricting that took place in 2010 for just on the middle school level. And that was fairly simple because it wasn't really street lines. It was simply feeder plans. So that was done in-house with the Facilities Commission Committee at the time on the Board of Ed, working with staff. Obviously, something like this, when you're talking about elementary, you're talking about streets and things like that, which is a lot more complex. So I guess my first question is just, who or how will this be taking place?
I would see this as coming from the superintendent at that time, with SLAM and others providing resources. You're right, it is complicated. And I think there'll be a number of iterations of possible arrangements that would need to be analyzed from the point of view of what would be their impact on the racial balance profile. But I think ultimately, the superintendent needs to come back to you. He or she may want to recommend more than one option, but it ought to be coming from the superintendent, with whatever help SLAM and other consultants might be able to provide.
So I guess, you know, and it was quite some time ago, the last time we had a full district redistricting, which this is. I mean, I know we're talking about elementary. But obviously, when you change elementary zones, you will be changing middle and high school. So I'm sure there are parents of middle and high school kids who right now are thinking, oh, it's just going to be elementary. But very clearly, this is going to impact everyone in our town. So the last time a redistricting of this magnitude took place was back in 2002, 2003, when Burr was opened. So they had to redistrict, and also the new, the high school reopened. So they had to change a lot of things. And that was an incredibly lengthy process with so many iterations of plans. It was, you know, C19. I mean, I actually came across some paperwork, because I'm a pack rat, and I found some of these old things. And it was incredible, the number of plans that came out. It was an outside firm that was hired by the Board of Education to run all of these different plans. And it was a very, very extensive and expensive, my understanding is, process. And so I guess I just, knowing the scope of this, I just, I guess in terms of budgeting and things like that, like how is that going to work in terms of, you know, putting this into the budget? I mean, with this timeline, we're talking about getting plans to the board in the spring of next year. So I'm just trying to figure out how that's going to work in terms of the budget, you know, how much this will cost just to get the outside help.
All good questions, and we'll need to work up the answers to those. We haven't, obviously have not included them for you here. But you're right, this is going to be complicated because as you look at various district line arrangements, you have to know where each individual child is and how they're affected and what the overall racial balance resulting. So you're right, it's a complicated process, and we're going to need help from outside.
Yeah, and then another question, just staying on page four here, when it says, "The plan will assure that students currently receiving bilingual education services continue to receive such services." I mean, I think that that's really important to mention. But I know of a lot of services that are provided. I'm thinking specifically of McKinley. For instance, I work for the Boys and Girls Club, and we have a site at McKinley that provides aftercare for over 100 students, 50 of whom, or no, 45 of whom, receive free aftercare the entire school year. That is something that we got, that was done through a grant, you know, with the district working with Wake Men to provide that. And I'm not sure exactly how far out that program is going to go. But this is obviously something that families are really reliant on. I mean, this is a huge, huge service that is provided to dozens of families at this school. And I would be very concerned that, you know, and this is just one example. I know there are other things that this school, and other schools that have students, you know, who have other needs, that they provide that. And so I just think while it's very important to mention the bilingual services, there are a lot of other pieces that families rely on at a school that they have been in for some time. And so I just think it's really important to keep that in mind and factor that in, just in terms of, you know, what will this cost? I mean, if we want to make sure that we are supporting these students, you know, if they do have to, any students who have to leave what is their home school that they have been in, that they've relied on, I just think it's really important for us to keep that in mind of exactly everything that we provide for them. So a lot of, you know, and some things that are intangible, perhaps. But these things are tangible. And I do think it's really important to keep that in mind as we are moving forward.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, and thank you for the plan. I appreciate having the chance to look at it in some detail. I also have largely budgetary questions. One of the things that I noticed was in Section 3, Improving School Climates, we're going to review the steps that the district is currently taking and, you know, address issues, you know, do a survey of effective instruction, assessment of progress, all those things. Those things theoretically, if we find shortcomings, could impact the budget that we're going to be discussing in the fall and over the winter, correct? And I guess I don't know how we would plan for that since it's kind of an unknown. If we're looking for holes in our programs and our educational offerings, how do we plan for the money in that '23-'24 budget to address those?
Which budget will be well down the road by the time February of '23 rolls around? That's the problem.
Right, right. I mean, we're going to, we're going to begin, we're going to be, yeah, that is the problem, right? I mean, we're going to begin working on the budget, if not soon, then in the next couple of months. You know, in the fall, you guys will be doing a lot of work in-house to prep a budget. And by February 1st, we're going to have, are we going to have that review conducted, completed by February 1st?
Well, that's what this plan calls for. And without knowing what the details of that would be, if there are elements of that plan that frankly cannot be accommodated in the budget that has already been several months down the road, they may, they may need to be in the following year's budget.
Yeah, I mean, and I get that. I just, you know, it's an unfortunate scheduling issue in the sense that if we, if we identify an area that has a need, then we're going to have to wait another year and a half to implement that need at the school level. But again, like you're not in charge of the schedule. I get that. But I, like, seeing this and thinking about how this would go through the budget process, we kind of need to start thinking about that element of it sooner, much sooner.
There may, there may be pieces that we can identify sooner. I was a little reluctant, given the transition of leadership that you're all experiencing, to say to the new person that you have to have something by December 1st. So there was a little bit of hesitancy there on my part to make the date too soon. But I also felt we should get on with it. There may be some elements that my colleagues and I can identify early enough to be in your '23-'24 budget plan. But I suspect there'll be others that the new superintendent will identify that will have to wait until the next year.
Well, then we certainly don't want to do a superficial, you know, top-level, you know, five-minute survey, right? We want to do as comprehensive a job as we can. There's important issues. Again, it's just we're hamstrung by the schedule a little bit. If I can move to, back to, back to page four. A thing that I noticed in the amendment says, "The proposed plans may include the use of pocket redistricting with respect to planned new housing construction in the McKinley area." I was wondering if you could expand on that a little bit. The way I'm kind of reading this on the surface is that, you know, there's housing that's, this plan not yet built, that at some point, we may, even if it's in the kind of McKinley neighborhood, are we going to send those, those kids perhaps to other schools?
Dr. Tracy, I'm going, if you don't mind, I'm going to let Mr. Asa. This is something that was discussed in the Facilities Committee in part of our first review of the SLAM projections.
Yeah, it's actually a very good question. And it has come up in facilities, and it's going to continue to be part of our work there. One of the things that the committee has talked about, bringing forth to the board, is, for example, when a new large-scale development is built in the McKinley Zone, identifying that as feeding into a different elementary school from the start. So right off the bat, before people rent or buy or move in, they know that their home elementary school is X, and that is what is meant by the pocket redistricting in here. And I thought it was important that Dr. Tracy include that in this plan because I think inevitably, looking at the 10-year projections for McKinley, regardless of racial imbalance, it's something that we're absolutely going to have to look at, especially with the development on the east side of town.
No, and I really appreciate that. You set my mind at ease because I do not like the idea of pocket redistricting as a concept. You know, I don't want to take a single street where people are living and move them away from all of their friends and neighbors. But in this case, with developments, this makes much more sense to me.
Yeah, and this is the only instance of pocket that we're most likely going to be recommending bringing to the board.
It did jump out at me.
And we, I wanted to follow up on that. We just looked at this as a potential, something that could be addressed maybe sooner rather than later. This is not a, you know, a housing that hasn't even built yet. Students are not even there. And that, rather than moving students in a pocket from their current home, potentially looking at current district lines, especially since that's where a lot of development is going. Also, just some feedback, when the Facilities Committee met with SLAM, Mike Zubba gave some just anecdotal information with other districts that he's worked with. I think that he said that Trumbull has board policy on this for any new housing developments in terms of being able to choose the elementary school that they, that they go to. And people that move into those developments understand that there is some flexibility there. He works with districts in Massachusetts, that, you know, just their map has buffer zones. So there's just a notice that, you know, your elementary school district might be changing sooner rather than later.
And thank you for that perspective. As we've talked many times in this meeting about development and the pressures that that is putting on our, on our district line. So I'm sure we'll be thinking about this again and again. But I'm glad we're already kind of trying to, trying to think a step ahead as far as that's concerned.
And this board knows, but also just for the public, the Facilities Committee did have the Director of Planning and Zoning come meet with us. We reviewed some of the housing developments that are approved already. So, you know, share some of our concerns about the development in town and how it affects this plan.
All right, just to get back to my questions. Dr. Tracy, you answered your presentation. I actually answered several other of my questions. But I, one thing that I don't want to be a killjoy about, but seems out of place in Section 3, Improving School Climates for All Children, assure all, that all students are safe, loved, and learning. Loved seems out of place there. Well, it's, it's a, I appreciate the sentiment. Some people will argue that's not the job of the school to do. It just, it, I would love it if that were true. I also don't think that's a measurable goal. You know, a word like respected seems to fit there more for me. Maybe I'm just being ridiculous about it, but it, or connected. Loved is just a, it's a word freighted with meaning and a beautiful word. And I'm, and I'm just, I can't believe I'm arguing against it. But I, it just, it seems out of place to me in a planning document. I'll leave it at that.
That may be more just me philosophically, aspirationally saying what I would hope for for every one of your kids.
And God bless you. I, again, I-
I will not ask for a vote on that issue.
Is that it, Mr. Peterson? Ms. Kelly?
Hi. Real quick, just because I don't, I look at the whole part of number five, and I'm- Real quick, just 'cause I don't, I look at the whole part of number five, and I'm just a little confused why that's even part of the plan at all. Like, it's, I feel like it's coming after we do, it's like, it's like a look ahead to a whole other year after we've done all the redistricting, all this stuff, potential redistricting, sorry, to address the racial imbalance. I feel like I agree with you that I don't think this is gonna move the needle much on anything, so I just don't know why we would even be putting in a plan that we have to submit, that's now in writing and holding ourselves to this timeline, when I don't know how much value it's gonna add to what we're trying to accomplish right now. So I'm just confused why it's here.
Yeah, two, two observations. One is, as you can see, it is highly conditional. If the board approves, if enough people enroll and so forth. But, and, and you may ultimately decide that that should not be part of your plan. I put it there because the, a lot of the feedback that we got from the folks at the State Board of Ed, we had a conversation with them after the May 4th meeting, and I think it was sometime in June, what are you expecting of us? And they talked a lot about opportunities for, for intra-district magnet, ways of drawing youngsters away from their immediate neighborhoods and creating more diversity in that way. So that's why it's there. It's, partly I think it's an interesting idea, but also I thought it would be an evidence of responsiveness to what at least the staff at the State Department of Ed was saying they would like us to look at. But I, I agree with you that it's, it's, it's not mathematically going to solve the problem. That's also why the Open Choice Program is not in here, because that's not gonna solve, it's a good thing to do, it's worthy and important for those kids, but it's not gonna solve the problem. So you may ultimately conclude that this should not be part of it, but I think a couple of the board members were in on those discussions with the state folks, and it's, it's here because that's something that they went back to at least two or three times during the conversation.
Ms. Asa.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I generally agree with you. One of the things that I think may come from our work as a board, when we're looking at redistricting and facility utilization, is exploring the idea of, you know, one or two schools becoming, let's say, a dual-language program. So I do think it's possible that some of this may come up in discussion and, and board debate when we go through Section 4 here and we dive deep. So, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with the sentiment that it's, it's after the fact, but I just also want to say that it is a possible, there are areas that we're lacking in the district that are outside of racial imbalance, which include servicing our non-English-speaking students. So again, budget, space, everything. I think this will all be part of the conversation. Just wanted to say that.
And just as a follow-up to that, this was also feedback from the State Board of Education, and also just looking at where the housing is in terms of town, that a plan might correct the imbalance, but then we might be revisiting it again. Offering magnet program throughout the district might help alleviate a future imbalance if people are voluntary leaving McKinley or another elementary school that maybe is pushing the line to voluntarily go to another school. There was concerns about putting it originally. I think plans had it, should we do it before the redistricting? There was concern about budget, and just at this particular juncture in where we are in the district with, you know, not having a, a full-time permanent superintendent, you know, realistically, it was a big left to do it sooner rather than later, but didn't want it to be up for discussion. It was feedback that we received. Mr. Peterson, Ms. Jacobson, and Mr. Cummings, Dr. Parrish, the team, met with McKinley PTA back on June 9th, discussed magnet programming. At that time, I know that the state delegation met with members of the, the State, the Department of Education as well, and magnet programming was discussed at that meeting as well, so we just wanted to have it before the board for discussion.
So, thank you for this presentation. I, I'm actually feeling strangely optimistic about this opportunity, because I've only been on the board in 19 months, but actually, this is really the first time we've ever, or I've ever had the opportunity to give feedback regarding any of these topics. So it's a very welcome opportunity for me. You know, I kind of went through this document in a lot of detail, so thinking ahead towards how can I relay those details to you so that it's not at the table now and I could give you a wider reflection of where I'm at now? So having a plan for how to relay the other details after this meeting is important. But I think that there are a couple of things that, that kind of stuck out with me, for me. Number one, I felt like one opportunity that, that maybe was missed is, and maybe it's already a part of this, but like an assessment of the resources that we need, and, and not like we're talking about for budgeting what's missing now, but, how can I say this? What will happen if these students are moved from McKinley and the Title I money that receiving now disappears because those students and their needs still exist? But in addition to that, the shared services and the economies of scale that we're taking advantage of now through the great work of our teachers and staff at McKinley, how does that translate to dollars if we're moving those students? And having a better understanding of that. So I felt like that was a little, something that was sort of missing in terms of assessment. And then, obviously, the hot topic of redistricting. I think that the timeline, it makes me very nervous, and two parts of the timeline that I think were missing for me were, you know, prior to the start of this conversation, what are the board's guidelines for redistricting? I don't want to skip over that step. What do we as a board feel like is important to pursue through this process? And then also collecting that community feedback sooner rather than later. That's important to me. And then, you know, just touching on the intra-district magnet school, I'm interested in it, but I, I do think it's the wrong order. I would hate to wait to have that discussion because it so much impacts the conversation we're having with redistricting, so I don't know if it's really a question of, you know, how would that work? It's, I'm not sure that I agree with the order of those events, even though I see how we would struggle because we are, you know, in a situation where we have the interim superintendent. That makes me just concerned about the timeline in general. So, thank you.
Just some feedback that Ms. Trace and I had given to staff in terms of the magnet programming. Board members may remember, exploring magnet programming is part of the current plan that we have. A survey had gone out to parents, I think Dr. Jones was superintendent, didn't really, not, one program didn't really stand out more than another. I think STEAM was the most popular, but then we ended up bringing STEAM into our elementary schools. At the time, I remember, I think, I don't think I was on the board then, I remember that a lot of detail was not provided with that survey. So one asked that we had of staff was to just to, a presentation to the board, what does an IB program look like, more information about what the cost would be, would it be something just K through 5, would it be something K through 12? And that is something that we could work into, you know, sooner rather than later in terms of having that discussion, educating the public, educating ourselves, and furthering the conversation within the community.
And, and I'm really speaking to the facilities aspect of it. So obviously, like, where would those programs be housed? And that's what's driving my questioning the timeline. In terms of the redistricting conversation, you know, it's, it's to redistrict and then the next year say, oh, and also we're offering, I mean, it just seems a little bit difficult of a, to present it in that order to me.
Any other questions? Mrs. Max and Kelly.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on Mrs. Guernsey's point, is that something that staff or leadership discussed of simply, let's have the year of exploring the intra-district and the year after that? I mean, obviously, the one thing I do appreciate is that you did not try to have a plan to do them simultaneously. That's just way too much on staff. So I, number one, I very much appreciate that, but, sorry? Right, and, and, and another example, I think I'm just biting off way too much and ultimately not being able to do either, or too many other things academically, suffering for that time. So since it seems to be two calendars that either go one way or the other, because if we maintain, and I'm not actually advocating for one or the other, but I'm wondering why the reverse wasn't considered more as part of this plan to meaningfully address it through a well-done survey that might, you know, again, surface the issues? Because this would be ultimately, if we did this, we're really doing it because we believe in the programs in and of themselves, which also could surface from a year of exploring this and the year after that for redistricting. So I was just wondering if somebody could speak to that more, of why this order and not the reverse?
Ms. Asa.
For me, one of the key components is availability of space. And I think to consider anything as of Section 5 in a magnet program, we will have to do a serious amount of work to determine how we're going to, what, what our current space is, total seats in the classroom, where kids are now, where they could potentially wind up, and where would we potentially have that space in other schools? So I think it's, it almost unfortunately is a simultaneous evaluation. I don't think there's really any way to do number five before you do a lot of number four. So to me, that's, that's my thinking. I, I personally don't think, and this is my own opinion as a board member, I don't think the magnet, well, I love the idea of a magnet program, I, I don't think it would make a difference with regard to racial imbalance. So, you know, it's, it's something that I do think that we need to explore, and I think we should look at it, because I think there are some components of, let's say, a dual-language program that we may need to incorporate based on where some of these kids go, because we are going to need to provide those services. And maybe by launching a program like that in an elementary school specific, doesn't mean you're making the whole school that, but maybe you need three or four classrooms or five classrooms. So I don't know if that helps at all, but that's my, my thinking.
I think not realizing the magnet program, you're not gonna know who necessarily is enrolling in it, that it wouldn't necessarily move the needle on the racial imbalance plan. And also being sensitive to some of the other facilities utilization, that the work that we're gonna be doing simultaneously, that we're gonna be having these discussions about redistricting potentially just from our capital planning. You know, we really are going back to March of 2020 of where we were. You know, this board, we had redistricting plans before us, and those redistricting plans might still be somewhat useful. I think that's a question that we need to follow up with SLAM in terms of reinventing the wheel. But, you know, as the board knows, Mr. Asa and I have been working with, the First Select Woman has a working group for capital planning that committee met last spring and then basically got the capital planning for year one. There's an expectation that the committee comes up with the next four years, that there is going to be a town capital plan that combines the Board of Ed's needs as well as the town's needs, and, you know, everybody gets on board, all-town bodies, and that moves forward. You know, there's only a certain number of money available for our school projects. We have the HVAC district first phase, we got the startup money for that. I will share that, some feedback that we received in getting that initial funding, that when we come back for the bulk of it to move it forward, that there was going to be an expectation that this board was putting forth a capital plan for the next four years that we were all behind. You know, we have school renovations on there, Dwight Elementary School, as shared in the plan, we've got some schools that are under 75% capacity. So those, those conversations are gonna be happening simultaneously, and I think decisions around those might be made sooner rather than later. Ms. Asa.
Sorry, just one more thing. One of the other things that we did discuss with staff was the idea of how a dual-language program would work. And from my understanding is you don't take K through 5 kids and throw them into a dual-language program, you start in kindergarten. So this would take years to build up. You would start with a K class, and then the next year you have a K in 1 and the K 1, 2, 3. I think, Dr. Parrish, does that sound right? She's nodding her head. But I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
No, you're absolutely correct. It would involve both having a regular classroom teacher and a teacher that's, that's able to speak whatever language we decide is a part of that dual-language program. Ms. Marte has, has pulled some data, and our top three languages are Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic. So it would be, you know, depending on what our choices are, we would probably pick one of those three languages as the focus for that dual-language school. But it would involve staffing and building it from the ground up, one grade at a time per year.
Okay, that was a far more complete answer than I was expecting, so I really just wanted to follow up because I thought it was a fair question, so wanted to get it out there. Also, in the vein of asking the question to get it out there, I was wondering if anyone, either Chairwoman or Dr. Tracy, if you could speak to the attorney opinions we've received about this? And again, this isn't so much for me, because I, I believe I know the answer to this, but this is a question the public is going to ask regarding the optional nature of our response to the state's request and the details therein. And so I was wondering if someone could speak to, again, that we have both a board, district, legal firm, as well as the town attorney, which I had asked for an opinion from. Ms. Asa.
Um, so yes, and actually, that was taken to heart, and many of us shared that sentiment. So when Mr. Cummings was still here, we did have a consultation with our board attorney in depth on this topic, and talked about, you know, what are the options? And ultimately, are, is there a way that the district can continue to improve in a way in which we feel is best, but isn't necessarily in line with the state statute? And basically, at the end of the day, the answer is no. While the statute itself is not a punitive statute, there is a process in which the state board could file a, basically a violation against us, which they've actually spoken of in public. And unfortunately, what that is, is that is the state board bringing what's called a 10-4B against the town and the board, and that is a fiduciary penalty, if you'll say. So it does, it would give them the opportunity to penalize the town financially in, in various ways. Did the attorney think that that's the way they would want to handle it? No, he thought that they would want to actually solve the imbalance problem. So the next step after that would be getting an injunction. One thing to note how a 10-4B hearing works is that it's brought by the state board, it is heard by the state board, and ruled by the state board. So if, if you want to, say, judge and jury, it's, it's a simple way of putting it. Our attorney felt that based on the wide percentage point variance of how out of balance we are, that we could spend, I didn't either, that, someone's phone's talking out there. Yeah. So, so our attorney felt that, you know, yeah, if we spent 10 days up in Hartford trying to defend a case that we would inevitably lose, we would be spending a lot of the town's money for something that, that we really couldn't win. I will say that I've been outspoken before about thinking the state should mind their business and let us run our district. That was very much my feeling about this for a long time, until that conversation. When I had that conversation and I sat through that and realized what the reality is, this is going to have to be solved, and we've been kicking it long enough, so now we have to solve it. And the other thing that we had asked our attorney to do is consult with the town attorney on this, which from what I understand, I've been told that did happen. And the result was that the, the town attorney was not involved in this process, but he heard from our attorney, and I don't believe that there was any further dialogue of, of arguing the point.
Thank you. So basically, if the public comes back to the board objecting to the idea of redistricting, and this would undoubtedly be coming from many idea of redistricting, and this would undoubtedly be coming from many new parents who have not been in the district, are brand-new to Fairfield, are brand-new to the schools, and they say, "Come up with something else, be creative," it is a fair response to say, "We're still open to an idea. If we can come up with something to put in this amendment that avoids that," it's not that we can't, but having been in the midst of this since the Cultural Diversity Task Force back in 2005, I'm not sure what else we can try that we haven't already. But again, if anyone in the public is watching, let us know. But otherwise, it's, it's time. As in, we don't have a choice. That's, I guess that's really kind of what I've always wanted to have as the foundation of doing something.
There is an expectation that, you know, we are, we are state board of education per state statute. We are creatures of the state. We are carrying out the educational interest of the state. The state board has made a request for us, and we are expected to act in good faith, which is what we, we are trying to do tonight. So I thank you for the conversation. But absolutely, you know, if any member of the public or staff is listening and has an idea that we have not covered in this amendment, or has not been covered in the decade-plus of discussions and plans that has been put forth, we are absolutely open to hearing it. That said, there's also the redistricting conversation that's around facilities utilization and the capital planning, and it, you know...
Thank you for adding that, because that was actually something I wanted to bring up, is that please understand that we have a facility issue completely apart from this that we're looking into. I have a lot more questions, but I think Mrs. Gerber has a follow-up. Mrs. Gerber?
Well, just to, to follow on that, just in case anyone is listening to this meeting, I don't know why anyone would be, but, but if they are, you know, there is an entire page on the Fairfield Public Schools website that, that covers all of this racial imbalance, going all the way back years ago, that is really helpful, just providing some context, you know, to say, "Well, have you tried X, Y, or Z?" I mean, all of the documents, all of the links on that page do a really good job of showing the, the history of this, this issue that, that this board and many past boards and many administrations have been grappling with for quite some time. So I think it's a really good way to kind of see what else has been discussed, what has been examined, what has been tried out, what has not worked, just to give members of the public, parents who are new to this and are trying to understand how we are, where we are, that there is a lot there that would be really helpful to review and, you know, to get a sense of why, why we are here tonight.
Absolutely. And I think that I speak for the full board, that we really wish that we did not have this meeting in the middle of the summer, you know, but it really, sometimes the timeline is not your choosing, and this is one of those cases that we did not really get to choose, but we do have to act. And as I mentioned at the beginning, I'm hoping that the board can take action by the end of, of August, and I just wanted to give the public some time to digest this, the board time to give feedback. Mr. Asa and I, you know, did give some initial feedback to staff, but appreciate that this is the board's work. This will be the board's amendment. You know, moving forward for the next superintendent, who will be putting forward a redistricting plan, I think very much to Mrs. Gerber's point, while the superintendent, I think, needs to coordinate, I see this work being done by an outside consultant, the bulk of it, in conjunction with the facilities committee, or if this board, you know, opts to take a different direction, you know, looking back to 2002 and 2023, 2003, you know, the parents were involved, you know, we might want to discuss that at a future point, if it should be an ad hoc committee, or, but I think some of the original, the initial work can be done by the facilities committee.
Okay. I have a lot more. Sorry. Yeah. One thing that I think stands out is that May 2023, initial plan being presented to the board. And again, for any members of the public who are listening, first I should ask, is this amendment now available, the, the amended here, is this now available online, or will it be by tomorrow?
It will be. We'll put it up tomorrow.
Okay. But I was wondering if you could speak to, there's an awful lot that is going to happen between our vote August 30th, assuming we have our vote then, and that time of May 2023. And I was wondering, hoping you could give some color. There were a couple bullet points on the board, but I think some color would help in terms of how the community will transparently be engaged in this process, in this discussion. I'm not sure who's the best person to speak to that.
I'm happy to go first, if you like.
I feel like I'm going to let you go first, being that we've been, Mr. Asa and I have been kind of answering for you, but we will definitely follow up. The floor is back to you.
Yeah. First of all, yes, we, now that the board has received the document, we will put it up on the website as quickly as we can, hopefully tomorrow. And then the, the point of part number one, engaging the community, was to do exactly that, to plan a series of community sessions, in-person and virtual, so that members of the board and the staff can present, answer questions, get feedback, see what, what thoughts people have about how any aspect of this plan, including the redistricting, ought to go forward. And I like the idea of asking the board to come forward with principles, P-L-E-S, that you may have, to say, "Whatever the plan does, it, it ought to reflect these priorities." That would be, if, if I were here doing it, that would be very helpful to me.
I don't know if you want to add anything from the board perspective of what that facilities committee will be doing, as well as if we have a desire for an ad hoc committee, what will be accompanying these public meetings? And again, and it starts with a meeting this Thursday, correct? That the facilities committee is meeting this Thursday?
So yes, we are meeting this Thursday, and one of the agenda items is going into further review of the 10-year projections. And I think the facilities committee is going to be a great working group for this, but I think this board as a whole has expressed that this is work that we need to do as a board. And I still think that that's true. The committee should and can be used for as much of that groundwork and legwork in advance of meetings, hashing things out, trying to do as much as possible, so that the, the meetings with the full board are streamlined. But I would envision that there will be, as we move along in this process, when we actually start talking about the potential for moving kids, that we're having multiple public meetings with the full board and the public, to have these transparent discussions, time for feedback. So I think that's to be determined, but that is my kind of brainstorming vision of it.
And I think that we, obviously, I see our PTA council president in the audience, that really, you know, engaging with PTA council. I spoke to Ms. Flynn about engaging the PTA presidents early on, maybe one of our early September meetings, to have them come, share the plan with them, so they are educated, give them a chance to ask questions, because each school community might have different concerns. I think that's important to hear. You know, each year, we like to encourage PTAs to have board members come and visit with them. That will again be a part of the process as an, as an avenue. Webinars for staff, in terms of any staff programming. Full board may not be able to be involved with every community discussion, just because it would end up being a Board of Ed meeting. So there might be times as we move forward of what the community is looking for, that we split up. So we have, we have board representation on any public meeting that we have. Yep.
Just one more thing from the facilities standpoint. I think it's important, just to reiterate again, that this work is work that we determined that needed to be done regardless of racial imbalance. So for me, when I go into a facilities committee meeting, I'm thinking of facilities, and I'm thinking of placing the kids in the place in a manner in which they can get the best educational value. Having racial imbalance solved in that process is a wonderful thing, if we can do it. And I think that's what our goal is here.
Thank you. And I do also agree with Dr. Tracy, and Mrs. Guernsey kind of referenced it, that I think an important focus for us in September, working with the facilities committee, or maybe the facilities committee comes up with a draft, but those norms that will be given as directions for this process, and there are things that we're going to have to have discussions about, and there are discussions that are going to take a long time, you know? Can Walkers be redistricted? Can you have Singleton? Those kinds of discussions will be really important norms. But again, it starts with making the case to the public of why we have to do this, because I think that's important. That's, the rest of my questions get into the specifics of the, oh, I'm sorry, one, one other question. We never, the board has never heard about how that McKinley PTA meeting went. And I was just wondering if, if there's anyone that could speak briefly to, you know, how many were in attendance? Was it staff? Was it parents? I'm just, I want to be more apprised of what's known out there and who has heard what at this point.
I'm going to see if Ms. Jacobson or Mr. Peterson want to reply first. They were both there, so I welcome their feedback.
Yeah, I, I, it was very well attended. There were a large number of parents and, and staff there. You know, I would say a large portion of the, of the meeting, parents were very curious about what was going on, especially at the state level. It was, you know, was, I think a large purpose of the meeting was also to build a foundation for why the state is expecting us to do what we're doing, rather than talk about future plans. It was, it was difficult for some parents to understand, given the, you know, why, why the specific challenges that the McKinley community faces weren't taken into account by the, by the state board, or at least they felt like they, they should have been. Mr. Cummings, I think, led, led the meeting very ably in, in that regard, talking about, you know, what the state is looking at and what the state has asked us to do. I, I found the discussion very, very productive, and I hope it's a sign of kind of future engagement by that, by that community, since they'll, they are going to be in the epicenter of anything that we, that we do. You know, they were largely concerned with some of the things that have been raised here tonight about, you know, the special supports that we have built in place over the years for McKinley, and how, you know, those might be continued in, in other settings. You know, the teachers were saying very specifically that, you know, McKinley has put together, you know, teams that, that, you know, can handle, you know, incoming kids with language issues from multiple angles, you know, resources that may not be available at other schools, and how are we going to deal with that, you know, which I think this, you know, this amendment tries to deal with in kind of a broad, a broad scope. But those were, those were absolutely concerns about, you know, how can we take what is special here and distribute it without destroying it? But again, I, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that that was a first of many conversations and that we, you know, we keep everybody engaged in the process.
Ms. Jacobson?
I concur with what Mr. Peterson said. I'd also add that there was staff present, and there was some expressed concern about how well the staff is prepared to address needs as students come in and depart, and all of the different, you know, services that they may need upon entering into the school district. And there was concern about how all of that knowledge, systems, supports that they kind of have as a well-oiled machine would be able to transfer to other schools, and how we will be able to replicate that. So in addition to everything that the parents had expressed, and what Mr. Peterson said, I'd add that there was some staff questioning about how we will be able to address that.
And I just will add that, not surprisingly, they shared how wonderful their school community is, how they appreciate the diversity, you know, not supportive really of redistricting, trying to think of ways to, around that. The sister school idea came up there. They were supportive, those parents that were in attendance, they were somewhat, I don't know, supportive, it's probably not that right, but curious, you know, maybe interested in exploring that option. We did share that when it was presented a couple of years ago, some of the challenges were, at that time, it was Jennings and McKinley. Those two schools had different feeder patterns. There was concern shared at the time by parents with just transportation, dropping your, your children off at two different schools, as well as some concerns about just the, the two, the two transitions for, you know, in the course of the third grade, and then transitioning again to middle school. But that did come up. They asked if the state board would come and visit, that they wanted to share their thoughts directly. We told them that, you know, when we were invited to go up to the state again, that we would let them know and welcome them to come along. We also shared that in the spring, as part of the timeline that we presented to the state, that we did extend an invitation to the state board to come back and visit McKinley. At that time, the timing did not work out. We will reach out again. When we spoke to the attorneys from the state board, we again reiterated that the community would welcome a visit and be able to just have this discussion with them in person. Ms. Asa?
Just one thing to follow up on that. It's not PTA-specific, but it piggybacks on it. And I'm wondering if Ms. Marte or Dr. Parrish can mention it, and how McKinley being designated, I believe, as a dual-language school, how that factors in with moving kids out? And are they able to be moved to a school if it's not a dual-language school? Or would it mean that those kids enrolled in that specific program stay at McKinley? Just, I think that's a good point to bring that up.
Hello, everyone. Digna Marte speaking, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. So this year is going to be the first year that McKinley is going to be designated as a bilingual school, because we have over 20 students that speak Spanish in the school. And then by that particular law, it changes the reality, because we have to have a teacher, a bilingual teacher, Spanish bilingual teacher, that services the students in the school. So we cannot seem like we're moving students to dilute the number of students, Spanish-speaking students that are in a particular school. So that's why it is in the clause of the racial imbalance that we need to take that into consideration when we're planning for future of the students at McKinley.
And just, just to be clear, does that make it a unique school? And I say that that's from the statute language that I'm using.
It doesn't make it a unique school, it just makes that program within the school unique. So it's not that we can't move the students across, within the school, it's just that pocket of students, we can't, we can't use our, our work to try to address the racial imbalance as a way to basically disrupt or break up the population of bilingual students that have opted in to receiving bilingual education services.
But then shouldn't those students not be included in the count, the percentage? In other words, if, if we're coming up with a means of servicing students who are likely of minority status, then I understand that it wouldn't be a unique school, again, unique, I'm quoting, "unique school designation." But that impacts the percentage. Why wouldn't that be factored in for an exception?
Factor, I guess I'm unclear. Factor it into what?
In other words, so that if those students are not counted, when you, when you take a look at this whole school's popular, of course, they are members of the school. I, no one's quoting me saying that they are not incredibly important, valuable, loved members of the McKinley community. But that when you are determining a percentage, the students of that, and we are looking at the racial balance of the school, why would, wouldn't there be an exception that those students would not be included for that specific percentage calculation?
To my knowledge, there, that's not the exception. They are included in the calculation that the state does. They are included.
Just saying.
Can I also add, we only have 70-plus students at McKinley, which is a, the number, the total number of students is 480. So the number of students that are multilingual learners are not enough to impact the racial imbalance at McKinley.
So basically, of the 400-plus students, only 70, about 70 of them fall into, are considered, are considered multilingual. And of that 70-plus number, 20 speak Spanish, which would qualify for the bilingual education that's required.
Ms. Jacobson?
So just correction, and I know you weren't around a few years ago, but McKinley has been designated a bilingual education school in previous times. So it won't be the first time. But the regulatory requirement, to answer Mr. Asa's question, is that you cannot move a student who is in a bilingual education-designated school to a school that does not have it. So we would have to replicate that at the new schools. So it's not a matter of keeping them at McKinley, it's a matter of we would have to add those resources to wherever they will be moving, just to clarify that. And unique school designation is a completely voluntary thing. Like, if the whole school was a magnet, then it would be a unique school. Or if it was a charter school, or something like that, that would meet the criteria for the exception, not a program within a school.
And we did ask this question back in the fall, yeah, we, we asked this, yeah, we asked this question February, with just putting a dual language, being that there is a dual-language program there, if that would in any way exempt us. Yeah, if the whole school was, but...
I guess I'm not getting the math on that. If they were allowed, look, I don't want to perseverate on that or anything, but by my count, 70 students removed from a percentage calculation would bring the percent minority to 43%. That just solves racial imbalance. I thought you said 70.
70 are multilingual, 20 of those can speak Spanish specifically.
Well, that would be slightly different. Well, that would be slightly different math then. Okay, so getting back to my comments, or my other questions, and actually, most of them are coming from the PowerPoint, so I'll try to reference the amendment when I can in the PowerPoint. First thing, just to clarify, on the purposes of the racial imbalance amendment, purposes one and two, just want to clarify that these are things we are doing anyway, these are not things that were being neglected prior to the existence of a racial imbalance plan. The idea of that to sustain and enhance quality education for all students is something we weren't going to do if not for this amendment, is something obviously slightly objectionable. So just wanted to throw that out there. A next question, and I'm sorry, next question was regarding the equity training, because we obviously have a lot of academic needs of our students, and the SEL training is an important component of that, for helping our students access the education. But this, very, very, never mind that some of it's coming before the Board of Ed, which I find fascinating, I can't wait to be PD'd again. But I'm wondering that a lot of what was said in the, in the presentation sounded very, very vague to me, the idea of definitions, and I know what that training is, and it's also something we did this whole year. So I was wondering if we could hear more about what exactly that focus is in terms of vague, or is it something specific to the issues of Fairfield, as in what work have we done to identify issues within Fairfield? And I'm talking about the data points and then digging in on those, differentiating between correlation and cause and effect, kind of thing. I would be interested in hearing more about this.
Fair question. I haven't had the opportunity to go back to the history and find out the answers to those kinds of questions. I don't know whether Dr. Parrish or Ms. Marte want to comment on what specifically we would be doing? And again, this was something that was emphasized in our conversations with the state board, that we address this not just as a McKinley issue, but as a district-wide concern, that being quality and opportunity for all kids in every school. So I don't, I don't have the specifics on that, I don't know if my colleagues want to chime in. We certainly need to get specific in order to plan the experiences that people would have next spring.
So in the district improvement plan, it addresses the notion that we have subgroups in Fairfield public schools that have not been receiving the same education proficiencies and, and opportunities that our white and Asian students have. And so we need to dig deep into our programming, into our understanding, into our own notions, to be able to provide the opportunity. So we don't, I can't say here, sit here and say that this is exactly what's going to happen, but part of all of the research is to first look within, look at our own ideas of education, because we all have them. Everyone went to school, and so we're all experts on education and our ideas of education, and have an understanding of what are best practices. A lot of the professional development that has taken place around diversity, cultural responsive pedagogy, all has taken place in the last 10 years. And so a lot of our teachers and a lot of our work has been taken place for many years before that. So we have to unlearn some of the things that we learned, so that we can provide an opportunity for every single student to, to really feel safe, loved. I'm gonna go there, because I actually love it. And I believe that that's actually the key, and as a, as a building leader, that's how I led. Our students didn't have problems, they needed more love. We needed to address what were the issues, and treat every single child like they were our child, and what would we do for our child? We don't just send them to somewhere else, we don't just keep them from attending a, a particular program, we don't just keep them from accessing high, highly academic opportunities because of our notion of what they should be doing or not should, should not be doing. And so it's really important for us to just explore and dig deep in the data. I agree, the data is hugely important, to be able to address what are the issues that we need to change. So I don't know what issues we need to change, and what we're going to discover from those conversations and from that work, but it's also to see where we are, and to norm all of the knowledge that exists, because I did meet with each of you, and I think, I, not I think, based on those conversations, there's a huge amount of knowledge, and I think that there's a lot of things that can be leveraged as we move the district improvement plan forward, if we all come together and norm all the knowledge and beliefs that we have about diversity, equity, and inclusion.
One word I just want to check with you on, when you said that the students have not been receiving, I just want to clarify, is it that the students haven't been receiving, or they haven't been accessing certain opportunities? I would hate to think that students have not received opportunities, that we have willfully put up barriers to that, and again, and if it's the issue of prerequisites for certain high school classes, then I understand the conversation. Is there something else that they have not been receiving?
So we have to, again, dig deep in the data to confirm that.
That's, that's fine. Okay, so in other words, what, what I'm happy to hear here is that this is getting increasingly more Fairfield-specific, that when we talk about this equity training, it's leaving the level, because I can just share where, what a lot of staff feel in a different district, but receiving similar type material, is we get those things, students need to be respected, we need to reach all these students in different ways, but what's going on at home? Like, what are we doing that we need to change? And so it sounds like we're ready to get more Fairfield-specific, so I appreciate hearing that.
And one of the reasons that we deferred the implementation of that activity until after the first of New Year is to give us some time to go back, at least for me, I'd have to understand what's already been done. We don't want to go over old ground and repeat stuff, that's, that's not good use of time. What have, what do we believe we've already covered, recognizing we have some new staff who weren't here, but what is the Fairfield-specific additional information that we think is needed in order to promote the well-being of all these kids? So that's why it's, it's something that would be planned for during the fall, but implemented after February.
Okay, and, sorry, Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I, and I don't know, I, I don't want to jump ahead of you, but just while we're on this topic, specifically talking about the, the workshops, just because I'm sure the question will come up, so when it talks about the workshops are to be developed during the fall semester, with implementation to begin during winter and spring, so will the development and implementation all be done in-house, or are there going to be any external people who are going to be coming in to help us with this? I just, I'm sure we will be asked, so I just think it would be good to just be clear upfront, just how that will work.
The short answer is, I, I don't know. I'd be surprised if we felt we could do this all by ourselves, that there, there might be some very useful resources that we would reach out to, but that's part of what would have to go on this fall. How much can we do, and to what extent do we want to reach out to help from outside? I'm open to both.
No, no, and, and I think too, it's just, you know, I mean, there's a lot in here, and, you know, I, I know, contrary to what some people may say, we don't have an enormous central office staff, and, you know, there's going to be a lot going on, just day-to-day operations, building the budget, plus all of this, there's just, you know, and there are only 24 hours in each day. So I just, you know, I'm just concerned, I just don't want staff to be incredibly overburdened with what is a tremendous amount of work here. And then I guess, just from a logistical perspective, so if we do go in the direction of having, you know, getting external help for these, how does that work in the budget? Because if we're talking about having things that are taking place in the 22, 23 school year, would that just come out of PD, or how, how would that work, just knowing, you know, that this is a budget that's already been approved, and that, you know, we have to work within those parameters, and so if we took from somewhere else, how would that work?
I think it would be a combination of those things, some, certain things like culturally responsive teaching, or, or looking at inclusive books that may come about during some of the curriculum work, that's already being built, that was already built into the budget. But in addition to that, there were funds that were set aside as a part of the ARBESR grant, that was inclusive of some of the equity work, that would cover some of, of what may come from, in terms of outside facilitation of any workshops or, or activities that take place as it relates to equity. And it's some of the things that Digna had already started investigating, some of the work that was already done last year was covered through some of those grant funds, so it would just be a continuation of that activity.
Great, thank you. And there are also resources for boards of education that are free, that we wanted to, and just in terms of, well, Mrs. Maxicelli has benefited from a lot of PD in this area. I do appreciate that not all the board members have, and I think that it would be, you know, just valuable for us to have this as a group, as we're discussing these issues, to become more knowledgeable, more culturally responsive. Mr. Ace and I, he also has shared that he received, you know, some training in this through Yale New Haven, and I've asked him to, you know, reach out there and provide some suggestions for a training that he thought would be valuable, which he has done, and will continue to explore that, that option, and have these conversations together.
Ms. Maxicelli?
Yes, thank you. Regarding number three, improving school climate, a couple of issues, when the idea of service to multilingual learners, I would hope that that conversation, or whatever happens with that, included in there would be some discussion of who could take leadership of that. I'm not quite positive what we have in district for accountable leadership for these students. So I just throw that out there to staff, I mean, unless you already have something in mind, but I would ask that be part of the conversation, because again, otherwise it can imagine be a little bit Wild Wild West, and these are really important students that if we don't address, you know, the young especially.
Right now, the, the leader is split among two people, and we do plan on bringing it forward. It's currently in the job description of the new director of elementary ed, who will take over the pre-K 12 through line for multilingual learners.
So the director of elementary ed is providing supervision of 11 elementary schools, literacy pre-K through 12, and English language learners?
Literacy is split between Dr. Swangler and this person. They are more so looking at the interdisciplinary approach to how literacy is done in science and social studies, and working with those program directors to make sure it's integrated within their curriculum as well.
So one person is director of elementary ed, English language learners, literacy, English meaning English language arts, pre-K through five, and then literacy district-wide, pre-K through 12, for the non-English language arts courses.
Alongside the administrators who are, so for the last part of it, alongside the administrators who are supervising those departments, so the short answer is yes. Dr. Swangler also takes 612 multilingual learners, in terms of staffing and professional development and curriculum review, but this person is the direct report to oversee the program in terms of the pre-K to 12 vision of it, even though there's different aspects of it that fall under other people's roles.
Okay.
We also have curriculum coordinators for multilingual learners at each level, so there is one person that takes care of K5, and another that takes care of, of 612. And so they work in conjunction, previously with Lynn Holcomb and Jen Swangler, but they would work in conjunction with Dr. Swangler and whoever fills the new position.
So I guess, again, I'm just, and I don't need to, this is not exactly the topic of this meeting, but since it was on here, I'll just simply point out, so that's now four people doing English language learners, and so what I asked, had asked about leadership for these students, that's my concern.
Yeah, it is, it has always, as long as I've, well, I've only been here two years, but for the extent of the time that I've been here, there have been four people that have worked primarily, the two program directors have served as the leadership, and the two coordinators worked more directly with the classroom teachers and the, the T-Soul teachers.
And I'm just suggesting that might prompt some consideration of that leadership model. That's.
I think Dr. Tracy can take that into consideration.
That's, that's what I'm asking, so.
If your point is we should take a look at that, and see if we can have a more focused accountability?
Yes.
Because somebody, if, if it's nobody else, it'll be the superintendent, eventually it all ends up on one person's desk, but if you're saying, let's take a look at that model and see if that's, given the resources that we have and the, the talent of the staff, is there a better way to make sure that these youngsters are being paid attention to K through 12, across everything that they experience? We can certainly look at that.
Thank you, that's all I was looking for. And then the acts, this might be a question to, I'm not sure to Dr. Savjanic, but the access to advanced courses, is beyond what we had had as a policy discussion, or is this a, a new or separate initiative?
Same, same initiative written to the district improvement plan in terms of our goals and the policy.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me. Thank you. The only other thing I would say is that I would, two very, very small amendments that I would be suggesting, at least on a first glance, would be, I do agree with the idea of connected versus loved, as much as we've now used the word loved here. And then secondly, I don't, and I don't know if what leadership thinks, and I do not want to weaken the plan in the eyes of the state, but saying intra-district magnet school slash program, because already tonight, we're not really talking about a magnet school, we're talking about magnet program. No one thinks we can really pull off a whole school-wide, so I'm just suggesting that for consideration.
Agreed. Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you. I'll go briefly, and just to make this easier, I'll probably just submit things in writing to you guys, so you have it in writing, instead of trying to take notes at this point, and also to my fellow board members. My words are a little bit more technical in nature, and actually going through this as a strike-through amendment, you know, I presume, and this may be a question to the chair, that in August, will this be a, how, or is this going to be inserted into the existing document as an amendment, or is it going to be a strike-all substitution? So in August, is it still going to be just this, or are we going to insert it into the existing approved plan and do all the strike-throughs, like an actual amendment?
I think we're just going to have it as a standalone document, that's what we've done in the past, is just submitted it separately.
Okay, so it'll just be this, we're not going to insert it into the existing plan? Okay, just wanted to make, that, that's helpful for context in terms of some of my proposed changes here. In the introduction section, I am going to suggest that we build in these dates regarding the state board of ed, like the September 8th, you know, and just making it clear, because overall, this is an amendment to the state board of ed, but it's also an action plan for the board, for staff, and it's also an information piece to our community. So being as clear and precise as possible was my goal in some of this, so just building in that September 8th date and meeting with the board. Under engaging the community, I added the June 9th meeting that we talked about with McKinley, as that would count, I would presume, as a community engagement step, that would be nice to add. I'm going to jump to section number four, just echoing some of the other comments tonight, that I felt like some steps in here were missing, starting with Mrs. Gerber, I was a little confused by what's in here exactly of who's doing the work and who's actually drawing the maps, based on the language that was in here, so just echo that question for August to be clear on who's actually doing that.
Can I ask a piggyback to that?
Yeah.
I, I just want to be clear that one thing I don't think we want to do is put too much detail of that work in our plan to the state, because that's work we're going to do, that's for our own planning, so not arguing with you that I think that's an important point, but I don't necessarily know if it's for this document.
Okay, so just clarification on that. The other point was, the, some of the text in the charts, and then in the texts, were used plan and plans in different areas, so one section would conflict with another section, one box said plan, the next one said plans, so I've made some edits into that term, to be clear that the committee is going to be getting plans, and the board will be getting plans, because I think that's what's been expressed here, is that that was the intent. So, simple edits such as that. I did include the notion of, that we, that's already been brought up, is our redistricting guiding principles, and then also a new charge. So there's language in the text here that mimics what would be in a new charge, like our existing charge was less than 20%, this says less than 15%, you've got pocket redistricting. So that's the beginning of what sounds like a proposal for a redistricting charge, however, there's no step in here where we actually give a charge. Like what to look at, like what, what kind of charge, what we want the plans to look at.
And that, and that would presumably include, what's the goal in terms of?
Yeah, like our current one says less than 20% for the one that we did before February 2020. And we had, you know, looking at pre-K previously, so the things that we want the plans to include. include or not include, the pocket redistricting, if that's what you want to include. So there just isn't a space in here where we actually talk about the charge.
Fair enough.
Okay. I won't go into all the details, but I'll submit those in writing. And then the magnet school, I agree. I was really confused at first, I had the same reaction as Mrs. Kelly, is I'm not sure why it's in here. I know it's already in our current plan, which is why I was a bit confused with this not being inserted into that. It would then become a strike, because that's currently approved, is to look at a magnet at McKinley. I was confused why it would be in here, since we're not anticipating it for to impact racial imbalance. But I also had the same feeling as Mrs. Maxine Cannelly of why that wouldn't come first, because if you're doing redistricting plans, you would, and then we know this is coming afterwards, you'd have to almost conceivably hold out space somewhere in the hopes that a year later we pass that, right? So we, in this draft timeline, you have us voting on the redistrict, I mean, the magnet idea 29 days before voting on the redistricting plans. So to Mr. Asa's point, it's going to have to happen actually simultaneously. My concern on that.
I just want to say that, you know, in talking about this, in leadership and with staff, one of the things, and also on the phone with the State Board attorneys, they're looking for something in the amendment on how are we going to ensure that we are servicing kids properly in every school. So I think this is starting to touch on that. Again, we can talk about timing and everything like that, but they definitely are looking for what programs or services are we going to talk about that we're going to ensure that these kids, no matter what school they wind up in, are getting.
And also just to provide programming just for new students, just in those
No, I'm fever of looking at the idea, I'm questioning the timing. Because here's my concern, we're going to move kids August 2024 for the 2024-25 school year, and then say, well, hey, do you want to move again in '25-'26? We're intentionally building in a double transition, which we know educationally is not good for kids in any district, right? An additional move is an additional move. And why would anyone who just got moved consider moving again when they just spent one year in a new school? So I want to set it up, if we're going to move forward with this concept irrespective of this racial imbalance issue, I would like to give it its best shot at its success. And I know, I mean, I think it would find it really hard if I just got moved from school A to school B, and then was like, oh, well, I would have done that, but my kids just got a whole new school. So why wouldn't we want to do this simultaneously to give it its best shot at success? So that's my point on that.
Excellent question. I think we need to wrestle with that.
The double transition?
Yep.
That's not educationally sound practice. So hopefully that can be looked at. And then I will reiterate this paragraph where we talk about the bilingual education program. I've suggested new language in here that gets beyond that, as others have mentioned, in terms of how are we going to replicate the services, needs, et cetera, of what's happening at McKinley and augment that in our other programs beyond just the bilingual statutory regulatory requirement, right? Because that's required, but we're going to need to go beyond that. So I'd like a little more thought in that paragraph around the assurances, whether that's the same class size guidelines, right? They have smaller class size guidelines, are we marrying that, what Mrs. Gerber brought up? So I'm hopeful that between now and then, if this hasn't already happened, that a really solid conversation happens with either the principal of McKinley or the PTA or families, where we can really wrap our arms around what is truly special and unique that's happening at McKinley and how are we going to be able to replicate that. But that's overall my comments right now, but I'll submit everything in writing. And just for the board, it'll serve as concepts for amendments in August, and if anyone from the public would like a copy of what I've submitted, then send me an email and I'll send it on out. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly? Just something to piggyback off something that Ms. Guernsey had said earlier. If we have ideas or comments or questions that might not be appropriate to discuss right now, like that require a little more vetting on our part, what is the best, how are we approaching this as a, are we sending an email to the whole board? Is it just to you? How should we do that?
I'll make a suggestion and happy to deal with it in any way that you see fit. I would say if you send them to me, my purpose would be to then work with my colleagues to develop an answer and send the question and the answers back to all of you. Does that make sense?
It doesn't, I would just ask that you copy. Ask the board just to, you know, feedback sooner rather than later, and we'll see where we are right now, looking for, you know, to get closure on this by the end of August. But if we need to have another special meeting before that, we can. But appreciate that, you know, this is a plan, and as we move forward with it, you know, we might be identifying new needs, I need to, you know, dive deeper on certain, you know, on certain areas of it, especially as we do, you know, some of this work in terms of the data for our high-needs populations, our facilities planning. But I appreciate all the feedback, you know, from the staff and for the board tonight. You know, Mr. Asa and I gave some initial feedback, and, you know, this board has given feedback to Mr. Cummings and staff over the last year, but thought it was important that we all have this discussion. Ms. Asa?
One thing, just on the idea of a potential, another special meeting this summer, and this is more for the public. You know, this board has strived to be in person since the pandemic started and shortly after it started, and we have done a very good job of being in person. While for a long time the public couldn't come, we do allow them now. But just keeping in mind that depending on summer scheduling and board members' schedules and possibly being away, if we need to schedule a meeting that has to be virtual, it would still be fully accessible to the public, but just throwing it out there that a special meeting this summer may have to be virtual, which differs from what we've been doing the last two years in general, so I just throw that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. So now that the public kind of knows that people have plans in August and bringing students to college, and, you know, if it is needed, and staff traveling as well, you know, it might be a virtual option, but we'll see where we are after we receive comments. You know, staff can take those comments, change the plan, bring it back out to the board, and we could try to do some of this, you know, virtually. But again, you know, not the full board, because we don't want to have a virtual meeting, but just comments to Dr. Tracy. Any last comments or questions? Seeing none, we're going to
I just want to thank you for a good start. You've given us some good information, and you've given us a sense of what you expect. And my goal is to react to those, incorporate as much of those with the help of my colleagues, so that when you see this again, it'll be closer to what you can support, and we can get it done on time.
Thank you. Ms. Guernsey?
Also, in terms of the timeline, when we see it again, would that just be prior to our next meeting then, or would we anticipate there would be another draft that would circulate? I'm just, I'm responding to that edit.
I'm hoping, and I really haven't thought about this until tonight, but in consultation with my colleagues, maybe we can get you something in a couple of weeks, so that we have another couple of weeks to turn it around again. I don't assume this is going to be a to and done. But you've filled up my yellow pad here, and I need some time to talk to my colleagues. But that would be my hope, that we can take another shot at this in a couple of weeks, not necessarily for a meeting, but you know, you'll be sending in questions and we'll be reacting to these, get something out, and then we'll take another round of questions. That's what I hope we can do.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Just one quick follow-up, is that if we get another draft in two weeks, just if we can please have the changes redlined, just so that it's very clear what we had and what staff has moved to.
Yep, so your eye can go right to what's different.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments before we go to the public? Any other? Okay. While this is a special meeting, and we usually do not have public comment during our special meetings, given the topic we, and wanting to engage the community, we invite any members of the public to come forward and give comment if you so choose. Please just state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. Trudy Darrell, Woodcrest Road in Fairfield. Just a few comments that I'd like to add. First of all, thank you, Dr. Tracy, for your leadership on this. I know it must be fantastic to come into school and have to deal with such a wonderful thing as racial imbalance and figuring out a plan, so thank you. I just think it's important for board members to have some clarification. Many of you know me, many of you know that I'm an educator of, I don't even want to say how many decades, because it's beyond decades now. And that my, in my previous life, I was not only an ELL teacher, but an ELL coordinator in a different district. So I think it's incredibly important that it's very clear that there are a lot of terms that have to be used properly, because they should not be and cannot be interchanged. So for example, a multilanguage learner is a multilanguage learner, previously called an ELL, an ESL student, that, those can be interchangeable. But a bilingual student is different, and there is a specific federal statute that designate what a bilingual student is, and you must be an identified English language learner first before you can be a bilingual student, designated bilingual student, because to be a bilingual student, you have to have 20 or more identified ELLs within a single school. So that's important, and that's why it's a bilingual program and not a bilingual school. And you can have a bilingual program and an ELL program coexisting within a school or within multiple schools. And that designation is determined based on the October 1st enrollment. So you may get more students, or you may lose students who are from that same language group. It will not change the status from the October 1st date, just like a bazillion other things, as you well know, that are, that center on that October 1st date. And then a dual-language program can exist even without a designated bilingual or ELL program. You can create a dual-language program without having a bilingual program or an ELL program in a school. You can create a dual-language school if, once you begin it at, for example, as Mr. Asa was saying, you begin it in kindergarten and then you build each year, ultimately perhaps ending with K through five, each having a dual-language classroom, and then non-dual-language classrooms, you may then ultimately end up as a dual-language school. I just wanted, I just thought it was very important to clarify that, and I appreciate Ms. Maxine Cannelly asking about the leadership and perhaps revisiting the current model, especially in terms of how racial balance and the multilingual learner aspect is tied in, it's sort of all tied in together, everything you're looking at, I know.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think those numbers, oh.
Hi there. Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. As was mentioned before, I am the no longer incoming, but current PTA council president, but I am speaking in a unofficial capacity as a resident of the town, a parent, and my address is 204 Grandview Road. First of all, this is a very large document to digest in person. You can, I took six pages of notes, so I'll try and just give my overarching initial thoughts. I, while I was sitting here, tried to Google the 2002-2003 full redistrict, which is the last redistrict, I can't even find information quickly online. I think I would say to everyone, and this is in no way implying that this is not the case, but remembering that last meeting of March 2020 and now looking at this timeline, I am overwhelmed. I will beg that the same effort, timeframe, and most especially budget is put towards this redistricting. Those maps that were shown in March of 2020, I can say just anecdotally, are completely, not completely, but largely irrelevant in parts of town, and will need to be redone. That will have a budgetary impact. I would argue that the implications of this redistrict educationally on our students is much greater in the wake of COVID. Doing this two years out to COVID, it is, I understand the state statute, I have been following, I very much understand that we are at an impasse with this, but I find it unacceptable as a parent to not, to listen to the conversations about mental health and school community and rebuilding, and then in a year where there are certain PTAs who have not met yet because of impacts on their community in person, that we are now planning for new communities. And not small new communities, new high schools, new middle schools. I think it's a large ask, and I think we're not, so, just one more. Just to be realistic about the budgetary needs identified, Section 3 doesn't even ask for that. I would argue that social worker impact will be across the board. I would argue that an assessment currently needs to be done of the budgetary impact of loss of student services, of loss of community services, of loss of grant services, of loss of PTA services. These impacts can be hidden and far-reaching. So I would implore this board to give an accurate impression to this community. From a parent perspective, a month between October 1st and December 1st for in-depth community outreach without substantial plans, maps, budgets is unacceptable. That should be a continuing piece of this project throughout. Putting two months on that is short, but I could keep going, and I'm sure I will at future meetings. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, motion to adjourn. Mr. Asa, seconded by Ms. Guernsey, all in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody, and a good rest of the summer if we do not see you. Have a good night, everybody, and a good rest of the summer if we do not see you.